Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independence City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, January 13th, 2015.
The audience please rise. Color guard attention. Color guard forward march. Color guard full. Prepare to post the colors. Post the colors. Scan the sign. The audience please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to a great brotherhood of rich families, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard dismissed. Audience may be seated.
I'd like to thank Group 38 for posting the colors today. And now turn it over to Karen Johnson, our city reporter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, will you come down in that?
I love the family member up there.
Raise your right hand if you have the need. I'm John McCarty, Seattle. That I will support the Constitution and laws
That I will support the Constitution and laws
Of the United States
The United States
The State of Oregon
State of Oregon
And the Charter and Ordinances
And the Charter and Ordinances
Of the City of Independence, Oregon
The City of Independence, Oregon
And that I will perform the duties
That I will perform the duties
Of the Office of Mayor
Of the Office of Mayor
To the best of my abilities
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Counselor Morton is not with us. She's on business trips. We'll do her at the next meeting.
Well, Counselors, Lynn Stott and Davis, please join me. Counselor Davis, Counselor Lynn Stott, congratulations on the recent election. Raise your right hand if you have the need. I, Mary
I, Davis.
Say ano.
Say ano.
That I will support the Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws
Of the United States
The United States
The State of Oregon
The State of Oregon
And the Charter and Ordinances
Charter and ordinances
Of the City of Independence, Oregon
The City of Independence, Oregon
And that I will perform the duties
And I will perform the duties
Of the Office of City Counselor
The Office of City Counselor
To the best of my abilities
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I want to, we're going to go to a recess right now. And then we're going to have members of the Independence Elementary School Choir provide some music entertainment, followed after their presentation by snacks. So can I turn it, we're in recess, but please come forward. And looking forward to hearing you.
Thank you. All right, while introducing the students, I'd like all students to come on up and make a group behind you. If you're taller, go to the back. If you're shorter, go to the front. The students here today are fourth and fifth graders from Independence Elementary School. And we want to thank the City Council and the Mayor for inviting us. People who are here today, it's an honor for us to be here. And we will be singing "God Bless America."
Well, on behalf of the City Council, the City of Independence, I want to thank all the students from Independence Elementary who came and touched on us today. And thank you for being here. And I want to thank all the parents for bringing kids here today to your city hall. And thank you for being here as a number of us were sworn in today to do the public's business. There, we're going to have a little recess. So if anybody wants to do pictures, I know that there are some folks who want to do that. And I think Karen's bringing some refreshments that are going to be out. There's Karen with refreshments. It'll be better than snacks. And so, and then I know that a number of students and parents have homework to do or other things. And so it's okay to after snacks before the rest of the meeting to go on here. So we're going to take about 10 or 12 minutes. And we're in recess. And we've got to visit with some young people. So we're in recess. Appreciate that. We're going to go back. First of all, I'm going to declare a vote call. Is that everybody's here except Marilyn Morton, who's previously let us know that she's out of town on a business trip. People will get sworn in at the next council meeting. We're going back up to the election of a council president. We are required to elect a council president according to the operating rules that the council operates under. The most senior member of the council is automatically nominated for president. And then we can decide. And so since Nancy Lodge is the most senior member of Yes. And a member of the council, so she's automatically nominated for president of the council. Are there any other nominations? I have a motion to be closed.
I move to close the nominations and let Nancy Lodge have her vote.
Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Can't say no. Good. There you go. Okay, that's done. Nancy's our council president. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, we have minutes from December 23rd in your packet. And do they meet with your official okay? Motion second, all favors. Yes, ma'am.
There was one error. The meeting at the very top. The meeting started at 7:30 a.m., not 7:30 p.m.
Thank you for catching that.
I didn't. Thank you for the person who did.
Okay. So I take it the, as amended?
As amended.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
And a close motion here for a question. Gary, you have some information for us before you just for comment tonight?
Okay. Do you want to do my full report?
No. I want you to just make your, let's just, you wanted to update us on a change from what we originally planned for?
Yeah, it was, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry, don't mean to interrupt you. It's not necessarily a change from what we originally planned because when we had talked about this, and this is a response to the citizens' comments with respect to the water rates. I just wanted to let folks in the audience know that at the time this came up in the last meeting in December, we had said that we would try to have a response and prepare for the first meeting in January. But if we couldn't, it would be in January. So we are not able to have it done for this meeting. Thankfully, people were on vacation. People, a couple of members of staff had been getting illness issues. So we're not able to get to that priority time for this meeting. So we will have a responsive presentation to you at your next council meeting. The finance director and our work and our utility consulting will be here to share with you some responses and some answers, talking to the general about rates. So with that.
Thank you. I asked for that because I knew that there are some people here who wanted to speak about that. So we're not going to be dealing with it. If anybody wants to talk about under visits or comments, I do have some comments here that they're welcome to do that. We eliminate your comments to five minutes or and then we will take, we plan to take this up as the manager said, at the next meeting in January. So with that said, I have people who want to speak. And if you want to speak now, you can. Or I can hold them over to the next meeting. Gary Brown, you have said you'd like to speak to us this evening. Good evening, welcome to City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like others, I own some of their own leasing property out of the defensive work. This property they leased was paid, is paid to the Oregon Department of Aviation. The lease was entered into when it was in the county. It was subsequent to the annex seven years ago by the city of Little Worth. A few weeks ago, I got a letter from Oregon Department of Aviation says the City of Independence is charging them. And now they are charging the, I am the speaker. A fee for surface water dispersment. And this comes up to roughly $100 per household equipment unit. And I sent a letter to the Oregon Department of Aviation and also to the city. And I've heard from the grandeur at this point. What I'm curious about is if this is for the city having to put out expenditures to dispose of surface water, coves, ditches, culverts, et cetera. And that cost money to maintain. I can somewhat understand that. Several of us actually though have pieces of property releasing that have absolutely no drainage property in case of my declines. They flood every year and they get drained. Originally culverts within, but as the county allowed the Oregon Department of Aviation to put larger hangers in down stream over my property is. They filled in the culvert and built over it. And there's no drainage there at all. So I guess my question is with council business. I assume you're aware of this fee I referred to?
I'm
Supposedly several years ago, you signed the legislation.
Yeah, I signed lots of things. I don't remember specifically, but yeah.
All right. This was several years ago and has never been enacted. And now according to Oregon Department of Aviation, they're now enacting, they're charging this money that gets paid back to the City of Independence for a household equipment unit. In other words, you have a roof or a piece of property. Instead of that rain going in the ground now, it goes down gutters and into some kind of surface drainage disposal. I'm a question, you're aware of this? This is now being enacted here just past a few weeks. So I guess my question is, and maybe you can't answer at this time, but is this a tax or is this a service?
Okay. I just don't have an answer for you. But I'm writing your question down. I'm going to hand that up to staff to follow up.
Yeah, I sent a letter just to that. But if it's a tax, I'm curious how it would enter into law. If it's a service, if we're not receiving the service, why are we being charged for it? So At your leisure, I'd like to get some feedback.
Right. I'll pass it to staff and you'll follow up with that.
Yeah, I can respond a little bit right now. But I can also let you know that the letter that you sent us, our community development director has that and will be responding to that letter correctly for you. This is utility rate, a utility fee for storm discharge.
Because this is a service.
It is a service, yes.
There you go.
So you'll get more, you'll have an opportunity to, to, my thankful as our community development director, you'll have an opportunity to speak with him correctly. I'll make sure he knows what your specific issue is. And if you, and how that methodology was adopted a little while ago. So that certainly could be reviewed and let's see if that's done properly or not for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Because as, you know, the heartburn on the issue is if it is a service and the service is not being provided, it doesn't seem fair to charge.
Right, I understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I have a question for Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Where's, you're talking, where is the facility that you're talking about?
These are two aircraft hangers on the property that I leased from Oregon Department of Aviation. So they are supposedly charged from the City of Independence.
Which end of the airport is it?
On the south end.
On the south end? Thank you.
Appreciate that. I'll pass this on to the other member.
Thank you. Bringing that up again.
Ron Smith? I think you're in there, it's out there. Good evening, Ron. Welcome to City Council.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. I am here to talk about a water issue, but it is not related to the issues that are being postponed until next week.
Great talk. If you can raise the microphone a little bit higher. Up, not too high. And just go ahead and speak.
Okay, I'll start over. My name is Ron Smith. I am here to address a water issue, but it is unrelated to the other issue that's in front of the council at this time. And I'm here not representing myself or my residents. I am here representing the company that I work for located at 211 South Main. We received a water bill for the month of October that reflected a usage of 50, 250 gallons. And that equaled the highest water bill we've ever received. And as most people know, I have a passion for pressure washing the town. And usually that's when that kind of water is consumed. This was in November. It did not happen. In, I'm sorry, in October. In November, I received another water bill indicating that we'd used over 10,000 gallons of water, which was double the highest bill that we ever received. And I am in runner to the attention of the city. I was assured that the meter had been looked at and was operating properly. I appreciated the fact they looked into it and that it was working properly. The, it didn't really check out, but the offer was made again. And the intent was there. And I'm not sure if they've tested it or not, the two of them. I'm not here to argue anything. I'm simply here to state the facts. There was no running faucet. There was no running toilet. There's no sinkhole. This is not an accurate bill. The information that was passed to the system is based on hearsay. I'm not talking about hearsay. I'm talking about I was there enough of the time to know the water was unused. Now, there's a compromise. And the compromise would be taking an average for those two months, an accurate average of those two months over a seven-year period of time. The, we obviously used water. And the exact figures, I do have them. It amounts to seven units for the two months, of which I've already paid for seven units for the two months. But we could make an adjustment for the year. And there is no issue. This last reading was back to what I would define as normal. I cannot tell you why this happened. And I'm not here to debate the past. The past is the past. I'm just saying your water was unused. That is a fact. But it's not hearsay. And I do not feel it's just a blunt point. I am offering the compromise. And I would like to have the opportunity to meet with the city manager. And we can take care of that. If it was something that you feel passionate about, we will pay the bill. But that's not going to change it. I am personally willing to be assertive and overcome any minor obstacles to resolve towards all these issues. So I'm here on my behalf of business that I work for asking you to consider our proposed compromise.
Thank you, Ron. I appreciate coming up. Because I'm handing lots of things to city staff tonight. And so I'll give this to you afterwards so you can get a meeting that's so requested. Victoria Kruljak. Good evening. I'm going to pull the microphone down to the
Are you saying?
Excuse me.
First, I'd like to thank you, council members and mayor, for allowing me to address ongoing concerns about our water and sewer costs. I would first like to thank you for the opportunity to have access to documents that I requested at our December council meeting along with follow-up letter I submitted to you, Mayor McCarty. I do plan to follow through with meeting Karen to attain those documents, even if I am required to pay for them. However, I would like to address a few more questions as follows. I was trying to do some research on my own online in the city website and noticed that there are no 2013 or 2014 minutes of meeting posted. However, I did find 2011 and 2012. Is there a reason that the most current two years are not online?
Unfortunately, they are there. They're just in a different spot. And I can show you how to
Okay, great. So David Klein was quoted in the December 17th IO article that whether water or sewer is on or off, whether there is somebody living there or not, there are ongoing costs. You don't eliminate the cost by not consuming the product. Cost is spread over the entire system. So my question is, attached tanks citizens would like to know, what are the ongoing costs when water and sewer are not being used while other cities do not require their taxpaying citizens to continue paying for discontinued service? Citizens of Independence would like an accounting for the revenues being collected compared to the costs of operating the sewer and water systems. This issue will not go away until taxpaying citizens receive full disclosure to all their concerns and questions. There was another quote that you compared. There are some bills that whether you're using your asset or not, there are things that you buy, cars, homes, anything you have borrowed money on that you continue to pay against those things. I find this a discreditable comparison considering when we have a car and a home, we typically use it. But water and sewer service not being used in an empty home isn't the same thing. So to me, it was not a realistic comparison. David, you visit with the cities, you said you were going to visit with the city's rate consultant about how the city's rate structure is put together and who, so who is your rate consultant?
I'm going to, I'll, I'm going to go ahead and give all the information.
Okay.
And because I'm sure you have, I think you have this written in. So I'm going to use that as a basis for
Actually, I'll have to come to leave.
Okay, that's fine. We can make one or I'm keeping notes still.
Okay. And will this information, and you indicated, will be addressed at the January 27th, 7:30 a.m. meeting?
That's what I understand. That's fine. Thank you.
I will say that I was disappointed when I received a call on Wednesday, January 7th at 5:00 p.m. from your office telling me that the updated report that Mayor McCarty asked David to provide at the January meeting tonight would not be presented until the January 27th, 7:30 a.m. meeting. This was done after my letter to the editor about the IO was already published and delivered, announcing that if concerned citizens attended this meeting tonight, they would be able to hear that report. It is inconsiderate and feels like game playing to make this information available at a 7:30 a.m. meeting that you know most people won't or can't attend. You are creating challenges that will not deter our desire for answers long overdue. I want it on record that I feel this is just another point to avoid your accountability to the taxpaying citizens of Independence. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Gail. Gil?
Hi.
Is it Gil?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, welcome to City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor McCarty, appreciate it. And ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the time to speak with you. I am here about the water issues on a number of different levels. And I am concerned first about the cost of water here in Independence. I made a phone call several months ago about this issue suggesting that my, my water bill earlier, I watered some. I have garden and I can't take full responsibility for maybe way too much water. So I took the month of the year that I use leased water and I do a lot of laundry because I have a lot of pets. And I compared that cost with another entity, which happened to be the City of Seattle. And our combined sewer and water rates in Independence matched those of the City of Seattle. And I would recommend, would suggest that Seattle's infrastructure has far more challenges and cost issues than Independence. I thought that was a pretty, it was $91. Now, that's what my bill was. No idea what the average cost is for people in Independence. But that was what my, my water bill was. And that's the average cost for our residents in the City of Seattle. And so I called the city and asked about that. And I had a conversation. I don't remember who I talked to. And I suggested that perhaps information ought to be made available to the public at large because if I was asking questions about this, other people probably wanted to know too. Well, here we are tonight. Nothing's ever come out about this issue. And this is before Ms. Kurbak had her issue with the disconnected. I'm also concerned about payment for services not rendered. That is not acceptable to me. I don't mind paying for something that I use. That's my responsibility. And if I don't want to use that much water, I can quit washing my dog, my car, or whatever, or sock watering my garden. But I do not think that it's inequitable or fair thing to charge someone for disconnected services. I'm sorry, I just will not buy, I won't buy into that. And I also have the issue regarding the stormwater drainage on the state airport. In this particular case, I'm speaking as a owner of a condo T-unit hanger with a job galvan of the city of Dallas and other folks that live outside of the city. So they are not here talking to you tonight because they, they don't reside here. But I, my phone's been ringing. Our condo T-hangers on the state airport do not feed into any drainage. That water sits on the ground, it goes into the ground, and it goes away right there. There are no drains, there aren't no culverts, there are no nothing. Comes off our hanger into the ground and it goes elsewhere. And now, if it hits a ditch or whatever somewhere else at some further point in time, I'm not aware of that. But we don't use your city's water dispersment system to my knowledge. And furthermore, I know that the water that drains the state airport from the state airport is under the peer view of Ash Creek Water Control District. I paid good money to an attorney a few years ago when I had a difficulty with a neighbor who was dumping debris into the culvert or into the ditch that runs on the north side of our property in the state, in the airport. And my attorney at the time did some research and discovered that Ash Creek Water Control District is in charge of the water that drains off the state airport that comes from the properties to the west, as the farm properties, goes through the airport and then, and then into whatever catchment system that flows into Ash Creek. And my attorney tells me that any water that flows into Ash Creek is by state law, by state water law, under the state water law, under the purview of Ash Creek Water Control District. Therefore, I'm questioning, does the city have a cooperative use agreement with Ash Creek Water Control District for the management of that water? And if the city doesn't, then I need to go back and talk to my attorney. And I would suggest that perhaps if you don't know the answer to those questions, you may also wanna do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Are there others who wanna make comments of anything tonight? Okay. Uh, I'm gonna hand these to Karen. Right, I want you to have this. If you water, please, water at the next meeting. Okay? Please. Yes?
I didn't give you at least a response to one of the questions. Ms. Krueljack, I believe it, I think, uh, the, the rate consultant that we use is economic and financial analysis out of Vancouver, Washington. And Ray Bartlett in particular, who's the individual we've used for many years here in the city. Need to sign our way to our rate structure and has for quite some time.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
Could I get that name again?
Ray Bartlett with Economic and Financial Analysis, he's been in the company, Vancouver.
Vancouver, Washington?
Yeah.
Please, go ahead.
He's planning on being here for the next meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna go over to Forrest.
That was my, that was my answer to the question.
Great. Thank you. Okay. With that, we're gonna move on to reports. First of all, we have commission and committee appointments that are on page five and six. These are reappointments, except for Western Days Youth Activities Person. And these folks have all indicated they're willing to serve. Do they meet with your okay?
Yes, the motion approved.
I have a motion, second to approve. The appointment is presented on favor, signature, and say aye.
Aye.
And both, and here it is. Next, a, uh, we, Adrian, were you gonna talk about the, uh, revitalization Main Street Act? Talk a little bit about that, this in your package, council members. And then I'll add a little bit of that.
See if I can get some, generate some pity by coming up here. I've worked on it. Okay, so, uh, yeah, so in your package, you have material that was sent from an organization called Restore Oregon. Uh, it's fairly self-explanatory. I don't know a lot more than what you have in your, in your package, but what they're asking for generally is support for legislation that would create an income tax credit that would allow, that would basically encourage and, you know, induce further historic rehabilitation of downtown structures or historic structures. Restore Oregon is an incredible organization. I've personally been donating to them since I'm young. And they, you know, their mission is, I believe, is to be a good one. They're not asking for, they probably are asking for money, they always do, but they're, but here they're asking for support. Have the legislature to basically, uh, get in sync with, I think it was 34 states, I believe they signed it, and have similar, uh, law in effect. And for us, I think it's, you know, given our large, our large inventory of historic structures downtown, I think we have a very compatible mission with what they're trying to accomplish, and certainly would love to see anything they can do to get some of those buildings, you know, some dues to reinvest in those buildings, and the tax credit, and certainly I believe be a, a good, you know, a good piece of legislation. It looks to be self-funding, and I don't really understand the mechanism, um, but it doesn't also sound like a very large amount of money either, or just create a pot of money that would be available for that purpose. So, with that, your call, perhaps, you know, I'd certainly recommend supporting their, their efforts, and perhaps lend a to that effect to Mayor Forrest.
I have, I'm gonna add on to, to the next report. I was approached by Sharon Tenell, the mayor of Albany, on this matter, and she asked that, do we consider, uh, support if they have a large, uh, stock of older, of older buildings in their community? And, uh, they asked if we support this, that it would be good for downtown. And it says here, it's funded by state income tax, similar to what some of the Oregon Filmer, actually, tax payments, and, uh, I wonder if this is in front of you, and if you can take a look and see if it's something that you wanna consider, um, and send them a letter of, of, of support, um, I wonder what it, for instance, it looked like, that would be of value to us. And Karen's candidate, one of the...
And actually, this is not ours. I, you'll notice that it's got one, one extra floor. This is a building in Albany. Yeah, isn't that interesting, how similar it is to one of ours?
So, I, I, I put this in to you for how you'd like to consider this.
Would this be something we would, would we have a letter for it, and say to the...
Uh, we'd probably send to the organization, the organization, yeah. We would, well, probably the organization, or something similar, etc., you know, for everything, or something, something from ways to do it. I thought it had merit, and wanted to bring it to, to the whole council, not just, uh...
It'd certainly be beneficial, I think, to the citizens, if we supported this. But at this point, there's no pending legislation, they're just trying to get something dropped in?
Well, as I understand, they didn't, they just, they dropped 1,400 bills of legislature yesterday. So, that was the first day that you could actually put them in, and so, this is the legislative, yeah, that, that's about 45 or 50%. It is a legislative concept, that's the number it has up there on the top.
Okay, so it is in that pile, so?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's either in that pile, or it's a pile to be dropped now.
Okay.
So, uh, this would be part of, this would be part of the legislation. Does C-OKA people, you know, I am, is this, is something okay at that end? Is everybody okay at that end? Is no, no objection to browsing?
Well, greed's a, a fun, is that right? As far as we know. That fund provides 25% rebate for...
Up to, yeah, up to, uh, for, for restorers of rest, restorations.
Rebate, just for shelters.
Right, seismic relief, and, and compliance, things like that.
But certainly, you know, dear, it's...
Do I, is that, okay?
Can you wrap the letter?
Yeah, we can prepare a letter. We'll prepare for the mayor's signature, saying that the council, the legislation goes forward, as we, as we...
Do we need, would you, do we need a motion for a, a sense of counsel?
I can put in the, that there's consensus for...
Say, Jerry, consensus. Do you have any? Okay, without objection, what I'm just, is, go ahead.
Forrest, I'm just, I'm just wondering, a lot of things we should...
Okay.
...indicate that we're, we're interested in seeing something like this, look at, but I would, I'd be interested in having more information on that, because it looks like it talks about, it's funny mechanism for it, it talks about oxygen tax credits, but...
You know what I mean?
Yeah. I don't understand, but I don't know what it means, it's complex, but, but if you could maybe come back with more information, I would...
You want us to go forward with the endorsement of, of consensus?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll get back to you with a better understanding of what, I get it from you with the consensus.
And there is a 28-page executive summary that I, or 25-page, right, included in the package, which I should be, right, I should have got this back, am I excited?
That's a, that's a summary?
Uh-huh.
I could, I could call it, I was in Oregon, I've talked a few times on some...
Okay, so we'll move forward with saying, you know, we're interested, we think there's merit here, and, um, we'll also get back to this for some additional detail. Your approach was that, that, uh, large, uh, historical, uh, Sharon, the working decision, uh, was correct. Okay, if, if, if everybody's okay, we're moving forward, we're moving forward. I continue along with the agenda. That's okay. I want to remind council that the annual, Big Eleven Valley Council, the government's annual dinner, is coming up in January on the 28th, 28th. Since we are an all-American city, we are having a presentation, and, um, and there'll be lots of people during, and so I really hope that you can all attend and, um, talk to Mayor, or Karen, or Sharon Tenell, and we can talk a little bit.
I think Sean, Sean will be making the presentation.
So, please, please talk to Karen.
Yes, and if I need to have your, um, um, RSVP no later than this Friday, and if you would like to bring, yes, I need a check to go along with that, we have the cost. It's $34, if you ask, so you can have it on.
Okay. Without objection, we can keep moving forward. Klein, you have a schematic report.
I do. So, normally when I prepare these reports, I try to heat out more ahead of time, because I have a team. And it was a little late today, anyhow, but, you know, I asked for it last, but the wishes that they may have for the, for my reports, and I include that with that. And the one that I got back, and I thought was the most interesting, early on, was a request, and it was a request for a moment of silence, and I got moving, so I shared that with them, which was one of our requests.
Thank you.
Sounds a bit foreign to my kind.
There, I don't matter. Thank you. Your next发言, and next time. So, um, we are working, uh, we've had these microphones, at the end of the day, microphones are probably ones that you, and those are good, those are very good quality microphones, which you need to sort of, all of those, you know, and, and, I mean, I'm worried, this is, uh, this one is probably to change how you figure out something more like that, but that's how those microphones work. They are good microphones, which you need to use closer to them. We'll see if we can, or if we're taking bids, and so we'll see if we can, something that I haven't, maybe, get, get off for some days. And at any rate, that's, uh, that's where we are, speakers in all American, and, uh, so, uh, last time I reported, we had our notice of bargaining from the association, receiver post from the Keensters, and so that would be one more, and they're just out there, and they all come to share, so that's, as in the past, we're bargaining for you, that you're generating this, so that's, shortly. Uh, today and tomorrow, was two of the last four sessions in the world, first in studio, we had really good attendance here today. Now, the event center, the focus today was really establishing the goals, mission, and center for our marketing, for marketing and brand strategies, uh, that will get wrapped up tomorrow, but again, we had a lot of good, a lot of good speakers from, from Towne Oregon, uh, and from Travel Salem, a lot of good ideas came out of that, and it's a lot of energy. So, I think there's some momentum to really continue the effort, you know, after they gave us, and gets, you know, the interest, and having some messaging, and a lot of our employees, and so, you know, we're, 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 we're just changing the position. So, another thing that we, there's been a lot of focus on, and this is really thanks to higher technology that we have here, is something that's good, I mentioned this to you last time, it's called Internet of Things. And really, the best way I can explain and understand it, and I'm not the best candidate for it, but Sean is in, is out, actually, on a presentation, I have, or, or fiber program, he's already right now, along with, listen, representatives from IED, the Technology Association, Association of Oregon, uh, is there, is taking a great interest in us, as well as a consultant that IED's hired. So, those folks are all in St. Louis at this moment, you know, talking just that fiber inflicted prenosis, the way that, that, in this, now. Today, they had their presentation was based on, on, uh, you know, based around how do you get to that position, or, and it's, and a lot of IED work, their speakers, and here's what happens when you do that. So, a lot of those American users in the country have actually fully wired for fiber prenosis. So, that was, that was a great opportunity for us to showcase our, 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 you know, the, to a very aged, natural audience. Tomorrow, there'll be a little more conversation at that location about the opportunities that this could generate for us. And that's a lot of other conversations we've been having. We are part of what is called, we'll be Cities Challenge. We met in a, at a conference last week in Cleveland, Iowa. Stakeholders, the community, school district, West Coast president, OSU president, uh, we also had intellis involved in this effort. They're on board with us on this, as well as our, through, again, our state consultant. She's certainly had to be quite capable, be, where, where, payback for us in terms of that movement. So, that, we are part of that challenge, it's a, it's an ongoing challenge, but it also is, it's also a one that wraps up in June of this year, but it'll continue a lot. And then, and I'll get back to you, it's getting, it's like with the Internet of Things, it's eventually, it's sort of a detour one, you know, way, and, and, back to you on this conversation. We also, the mayor, myself, Sean, we're also present, we're going to begin with, uh, some of our, to skip the very front of the Oregon Associated Technology, and Technology Association Oregon, Toward, uh, was also at the Oregon Business Project presentation, or was going up for that, as well, that gave to this new concept called the Internet of Things. Okay, there. And then finally, this Thursday, Jason and I will be meeting with some exciting folks, uh, some other vendors, some other, some other commercial dollar, but actually, we had OSU, where they're doing IoT, Internet of Things showcase. So, it's a, how many big deals? What is it? So, best I can describe it is, the Internet was sort of the first blush of, you know, connectivity to the world, to get, to get, to connect up to the Internet. You basically had some kind of smart device on the other, so, or cell phones, or computers, or desktops, or apps, whatever, those, but those are the kinds of smart devices that are out there that connect up together. Internet of Things is pretty much connected to other things. And what that means, I'm not really sure, I mean, you know, example, if your toaster, for example, or, you know, it becomes part of your smart home, if you're away, you wanna get your, you wanna get your toaster ready, or, you know, burnout in the kitchen, whatever it is that you're, you know, you're inclined to do, you could do that from a, from the internet. Uh, in the Rock Door, there was another example. And, and what it does is, not only is it a controller, but it's a collector of data. And it's what generates what's known for as big data. So, it opens up a number of different types of opportunities, some of which are, with ourselves upstairs, with our, with our test drive in the past, but, but it opens up a whole wealth, or who knows, unlimited, you know, opportunities. So, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to get our own piece of that market, actively getting, trying to get out in front of that. So, that's what's going on, that's really in a nutshell, is how I understand the Internet of Things. You know, I'll probably be long retired for it, for everywhere, there's things, they were flushed out, like I actually do understand, but it's, Sean will come back and let us learn what he understands.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add a little bit from some of those conversations I had in Portland, that there's a number of different things that are available now that connectivity is possible, everything from medical, where, where you can be, there are some places where it can monitor you, and so the ER guys come to your door and say, you could have a heart attack here, your indicators are all wrong, and so you need to get somewhere now. There are all sorts of things like that, there's a number of business components that, one of the things that I discovered, that I was there wearing both my work hat and my mayor, you know, in Oregon, it's a small place, and everybody knows everybody, you know, a thousand people, and, um, lots of people, you know, know you wear multiple hats. Some people didn't understand what a gig city was, but those that did were unbelievably impressed, so we are one of them. And the people who knew what the capacities were, were very interested in what the public, the business opportunities that are possible, and does what we have here, um, Portland ain't got to yet. And it's gonna be a lot of, for that to...
You know, even in a city, like, says it is.
Has it, yeah, that would, yes.
Well, yeah.
Even Kansas City doesn't have it. Yeah, I mean, and great example, early stage, these fit, it's, so right now, this collects data, you know, I have these steps I block, it's, it's probably won't be a lot, but it's, you know, they, they, they want it to be...
It's, it probably won't be a lot, but it's, you know, they, they monitor your sleep habits. They will be monitoring, you know, the new advancement, bits monitoring aspects, many aspects of your health. That data is collected and is usable data, but data is merit, just for medical purposes, for your, your medical records. It's just unlimited applications and just takes to create a tier of a whole lot of folks that understand this stuff.
Okay. Is that really a cure out of your toaster does? But so I mean, I'll be real honest to you here, excuse me for stepping into the presentation because it's fascinating.
Okay, so, are we good there? Keep going. There'll be, much, much more to be heard on this. So the, my table roundtable that's been ongoing is, I think has been very engaging. We're getting some really nice feedback from folks at the roundtable, you know, about the cities, you know, allowing this kind of engagement, encouraging this case to step in on, take on this. When you do that, sometimes you get in areas that are a little bit of sensitivity. We hit that mark a little bit last time. Conversation that folks wanted to have and asked a speaker on was a school-based program relative to the language portion programs. That's one of those crossover areas that I believe has both city impact and school impact. There isn't really that clean battery because we're looking to have, obviously, the best students we can come out of the schools because we want to employ them, we want them to be entrepreneurs, we want them to be able to go on, come home again and have jobs on and on. So there's, there, that one, you know, I think there was a little bit of argument just to that conversation, but I think sometimes that happens. But I think we're doing it in a positive way in ways we live, those pieces are re-engaged. Next month, we're going to be talking, I mentioned this before, we're going to be talking about, sorry to interrupt, we're making a presentation and we're talking to the group about what is going on with the Ferguson and other related cases that have been going on primarily back east, you know, regarding the base of the community. You know, there's, you know, with the anxiety attendant, the winter department meeting with this department, we talked about itself as well. You know, there's a lot, there's, there's always been this spectrum of trust between the community and the police force. And so that spectrum of trust in some places, you know, in some places, you know, it started waning towards, you know, the trust levels are going down. And so there's, you know, there's a little bit of, you know, there's challenge, or challenges in the police department doing the work that's, you know, I bet, you know, that's charged to do. So that conversation, you know, again, you know, we're, you know, we're trying to get out of head that a little bit here, the department, you know, has offered to generate some conversation there. I think that's going to be a good opportunity to start at the roundtable. I think it's a good forum, that was what, sorry to interrupt, was wanting to do and they were looking at. So I'm seeing you. And finally, we're, there's plans in foot for some kind of spring event. And I think we mentioned this before, so we're going to do a little more planning on that. Last year was the festival of Fuentevo. This year, I think it's going to be probably a little bit more of a traditional secret of my own event, although it will be an education component to it. I think we're going to bring back, if I wasn't at the presentation, we had a legal presentation , to bring back, you know, the bottom green act. So, you know, because that, the impact of that will, the effectiveness, that will be effective just starting, I believe, in April, May, so the timing will be really, you know, it'll be right, you know, be right on, spot on at that point to bring back some more discussion on how that impacts folks in that community, some of the folks in that community. So, and then we'll also, I think, maybe re-engage on the Ferguson, with this starting to get there, because it will be a little bit more to our audience. So I think the city, I think these are all good things, and I think it's, I think it's the right way to grow your sense of topics, getting out in front of the way we're doing it. Again, I think we're getting, I know we're getting a lot of thank yous for having started this. So I think your goal of basically, you know, creating greater access and greater conversation in that community is really starting to reap a reward in that fashion. You will be, we're going to be able to pay back also for many in-house, our IT component. We are starting to be a little bit more proactive in terms of not only our microphones, but the old, you should be getting something from our IT committee that formed about a year ago that looks at a couple of different apps that are by a march just in, in support of the yourselves, your, your, based on what it helps means, as well as the community in general in terms of how you, you know, there's not all public stuff, we're really, we're very much taken by it. And it's a very inexpensive product and it's very saturated with many locations. And what it is, is it provides citizens a better way of communicating directly to the city and generating, you know, if they see a spot, if they see a pothole, they'll take a picture, you know, post that picture along with a request to, you know, somebody to look at it. There's a whole feedback loop that says, you know, you're, not only have we received it, but years of progress with respect to how that pothole has been treated. So it's a conversation, that conversation is going to take place. And there's a whole slew of other information that can go on, go to that app, you know, what's playing in the theater? Do you want to get tickets, you know, for golf dates or free golfing dates over, you know, at Oak Hills or whatever? You know, there's a number, there, you can, there's, there are many, many different ways to connect out to the business world through this app. We've talked about it for several years now, I've been talking to our folks about creating some kind of community portal, some kind of landing page, where they come to this one location and they can get easy access to things like, you know, relocation information through realty offices or through the chain of, they'll directly connect to either, if I know it's what I'm, you know, with downtown business. So it's a, wherever imagination takes you, again, it's one of those, it's a needle app and it's really inexpensive. The other one is a way, we've talked to you about trying to get a little smarter with our technology in front of you so that it's a little easier for you to engage with our council back and so whatnot. We found a very nice app again to do that, also pretty inexpensive. So we're going to run it through guys, see the fact if we can work with that, and we'll come back to you with a little more information on that one. And we'll talk to you about your tolerance for that technology. Questions for the manager? Okay. Thank you. Let's see. Just a reminder, the managers are having, are managing to tie this to tree just before the cognitive meetings. So we'll be all day working on budget issues, capital improvement, strategic planning, money that you get caught up in, what we've promised to do versus what we've actually done. So we'll come back to you and report out on that. Just trying to close that loop with you so that you get that information and then we can talk about how we can share with you and how you'd like to update. What's your planning for?
I'm going to anticipate that sometime probably February, March, we'll probably have our strategic planning gathered and then we do look where we have and where we're going. So I'm sure we'll talk about that.
This should inform that process.
Thank you.
And I think we were successful with the cities in terms of our concerns about LGBI. I reminded, I think the Little Government Personnel Institute has been sort of a little bit of political football. They wanted to settle that game down a bit and try, try to make sure that what came out of that process looks largely, these services that were provided and the capacity that it had before continues to be reflected in the new LGBI. So the LSC board, I think, heard our, heard our, requires the mayor was, you know, pushed through a motion that Julie Mann, former mayor of Corvallis, put on the table, expanding the board, which is very much important to us, to get managers on the board, which is also very important because we're the source of the information they provide. So make it less political and more operative in terms of the organization, because that's really what its purpose is. So that, that, there has been some, some positive stuff taken out of our, it's undone, but I think already the new draft, the governmental agreement was a whole lot better than the prior draft draft, so we'll make a progress there. That's about what I have for tonight.
Thanks. Okay. Let's keep moving forward. Thank you very much. We have some unfinished business. I think Ben's director is going to talk to us about post-financial policy. Thank you for coming in and finishing your merit badge. Appreciate it.
So I believe you've got our new draft revised on the financial policies in the packet. We removed those items that we felt that were administrative in nature and that you look at that and must know if there's any other revisions. If there's not, then we'll bring it back next meeting for adoption.
Questions for staff? Um, if you have this in your packet.
Yes, I do.
Please, Jim, go ahead.
Do you have it for me?
I do.
Page twenty-one, under monitoring, capital budget.
Yes.
It speaks of regular reports, but didn't say who the regular reports are going to, or is that going to the city manager, or the council, or should that be spelled out there?
Well, it was taken out on that, on who we conduct it and receive it because we felt that it was one of those administrative in nature. So I think this is a regular reports. If there's a capital budget, that goes, of course, through the budget process. And progress reports on those, those types of things, capital budget, definitely would come through to, to the council. So if, if they, if we were in the process of doing a capital improvement, you get regular reports on progress of those types of.
Okay. I just, you know, kind of the way it was written, it just sounds like we make the report, then file it, and we look at it. And that's not.
Yeah. Do you have a suggestion on how to clarify, or should we add any regular reports to the council?
Should it be more specific and say to the council?
We could.
Or can you just staff here for?
Sure, sure. We could, we could pop back in there that regular reports will be given to the council as.
If we're going to be the ones that have to hear it, I'd like to see it in there, probably.
If it, if I might, if I might suggest in the final paragraph, where it involves identifying problems as early as possible, showing report or reports to council. So I think, I'm wondering if that's already included, if that's implied in there in the final paragraph.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that really referred to exactly the same thing, or maybe look that over and think about it, and we can talk about it and come back.
We, we understand what you're trying to accomplish, and we're in insurance.
Yeah, I believe so.
All right. Thank you.
And then farther down here under number three, it talks about immaterial changes to the CIP show, if reviewed and approved by the budget committee and the city council. I was wondering, you know, is that, I mean, do you want the budget committee in there? Or should that be?
You're, you're right, not necessarily the budget committee would be involved in that unless it's being.
It's like a several year kind of paperwork.
Right. The only time the budget committee is going to be involved is if it's during the budget process. So if there's a revision that's going to be made, needs to be made during the year, it would be entirely up to the council.
Yeah, it seemed like the way it was written, it must be.
Yeah. You're correct. I think we need to strike that.
And then one more thing. At the very end, under, on pages twenty-seven and twenty-eight, you had taken out this, this whole section on procurement policies and said that it's, it's addressed in another section, but I wasn't sure what section, so if you could flesh my that.
It's not addressed in another section. We have a separate policy, procurement policy that you, that the council had adopted a few months ago.
Because I couldn't remember if I'd read it in this or I'd read it in something else.
Yeah, so it's a separate policy entirely, so we took it completely out of the financial policies. It's redundant.
Okay. And we don't need to refer to that policy here?
No.
That's fine. That's all.
Any additional questions? I appreciate your diligence and reading so closely. Thank you.
I don't sleep very often.
Does this what finally push you to sleep?
Does this look okay with everybody else with the items suggested? Because as proposed, what they'll do is they'll, they'll take care of the two issues that were, we, that Tom went out for clarification, and they'll bring back the final document for our official opening. Does that sound okay with everybody? Okay. If you come up with anything else, leave a photo ship, see staff, and they'll work with you. But I think we've kind of got over this several times, but really appreciate the diligence. If not, thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome. I'd also like to add, did I put out the audit reports for everybody? Copy up. I wanted to update you a little bit on that. The, those reports were received and filed with the state on time by December thirty-first. So, so we did accomplish that. It was narrow because of, you know, various factors, but I appreciate you all hearing the audit report the last meeting in December. Anyway, good to go.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Moving forward, our new business, we're going to have a public hearing relating to sign ordinance and so I'm, okay. Okay, I have official, okay, official readings I have to do here. Okay, we're open public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to amend the Independence Development Code subject to fifty-eight sign ordinance, public hearing before the Independence Committee Council is now open for application. LA zero-one-two-zero-one-four is the independent applicant. Do any counselors need to dispose any conflicts of interest, biases, ex parte contacts, or site visits? I don't see anybody saying they do. Okay. Oregon law, land use law requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of each and every public hearing. I now defer to staff to make the required readings. Who gets to do this? Karen, you going to read that?
I gave you the copy.
The applicable substantial criteria fund, which in case, will be decided that the foundation of the independence comprehensive plan criteria are addressed in the staff report and will be read and summarized by the staff for the presentation in the staff report. All testimony, arguments, and evidence presented must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the Independence Comprehensive Plan or Independence Amendment Code, which specifically apply to the decision, RS one-nine-seven, point seven-six-three, five-A. The failure of anyone to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue will preclude appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue, RS four-nine-seven, seven-six-three, I-C. In addition, an issue which may be the basis for appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals shall be raised not later than the close of the record or the following, or following the final inventory hearing on proposal before the city. Such issues shall be raised accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue from RS one-nine-seven, point seven-six-three, one. The failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval sufficient with sufficient specificity to allow this council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court, or RS one-nine-seven, point seven-nine-six, three.
Thank you very much. What we'll do here is that I'll announce that, that, um, announcement. Staff reports are going to be summarized for the record. We'll recognize any communications that have been received and that will be entered. And all wish to speak will have an opportunity, we'll still have a speaker's card or a company microphone. Then applicants and others in favor will speak, those opposed will speak. Then applicants will offer rebuttal testimony. Any further questions from the council, and if no objections, we'll close the hearing or decide what we want to do. And then we'll move forward from there. Does that sound okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Danko, I think you get to make the staff presentation.
Yes. First of all, I want to apologize for pestering you yet again with the sign ordinance. This is the same update that you've already seen once or twice. This is the same, uh, update that you've already seen once, or twice, or maybe three times now. The purpose of bringing it forward to you, um, under this format is because we are actually amending our, the Independence Development Code and not the Municipal Code, there are two different procedures for that. And the city attorney has directed us to bring, uh, the proposed changes to the planning commission, and to the city council for both of the public hearings. Uh, the planning commission did open the public hearing on January fifth, um, there was the, uh, testimony of the, uh, hearing. I would like to just direct you to, um, page number one, let's see, page thirty-three, maybe there's, uh, uh, I wanted to correct, I wanted to have you, if there's a proposal for approval, to correct, um, a statement at the top of page thirty-three, under goals sixteen to nineteen. Uh, it states, do not apply because the city of Independence is not on the Atlantic River or, or on the coast, but in fact, it should just say, the city of Independence is not on the coast, because those goals apply to coastal province. That was my statement, pardon. Um, the proposed amendments are the same as they were before, what we were trying to do from the very beginning is to allow changing image signs in the city of Independence. Um, it's been a very lengthy process, uh, we've involved certain business people from, from downtown, um, their comments have been incorporated, they're fine with this, that's why they're not here tonight. They're fine with the, with the final version, which we've had in hand now for four or five months. I'd be happy to answer any questions that we have, or we could, in fact, come back to you with further amendments, if you, if you would like. The ordinance leaves attached, um, believe that we're going to open a public hearing and take testimony, um.
So are there any questions for staff at this point? Is this supposed to be, we can, well, we're, we're, well, we'll go ahead and ask, uh, if we have questions for staff at this point, and then we'll allow, and then, uh, we'll take any other, uh, comments, am I doing this the, the right order? Okay, go ahead.
I have a couple of comments, or, yeah.
Yeah, what, this is the point. Yeah, please.
Actually, the, the, uh, moving image signs looks, looks like, but, but on page forty-three, um, under such an end, number six, is actually supposed to be, looks like it's supposed to be at number seven, and it's all kind of put into one paragraph?
Yes, right.
That needs to be kicked out and made into a separate paragraph?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And the other one is more of a question about, what is on the, uh, on there is, page number forty-nine, uh, under prohibited signs. One of them, uh, under number E, which consists of banners, flags, posters, flags, does that, does that include, like, the tall, um, well, for example, the, the, the finite Wi-Fi flag in the park, or similar type, uh, flag, exit colored flags, really tall?
It's advertising.
Yeah, and those are, is that, then is that prohibited?
Yes, it would be.
So the ones that are all, there's several in town?
Like, like the one in front of the old city hall?
Yes, yeah, I think, yes.
So that would be, oh, that, okay.
Those were, and is that what everybody wants, is that good for everybody?
That wasn't something that was added, that was something that's in the previous code, we could amend it.
And that's, that's, I guess, my question maybe for the other council members, is that, is that what we do, that?
Can, let, let's put that, let's not forget that.
Okay.
And, uh, um, how do I, we gotta call it, that's, uh, page forty-nine, E, uh, tall flags. Okay, we'll come, we'll come back to that as a, as a discussion, if that's okay.
During this public hearing, are we really going to address those four sections that you wanted to go there? Everything on that?
Yes, I'd love to hear your opinion.
Well, we, I'd love to hear, I'd love to hear everybody else's comments, too, but I wanna do the questioning right now for staff.
Right.
Are there further questions for staff at this moment? Okay, and so what I'll do now, are there any other, uh, uh, written testimony, and, and, anything that we have to, uh, note? And, uh, in favor of this, any written comments, uh?
No written testimony has been received.
Okay, are, um, and is, uh, if anybody wants to speak in favor of this, or, or, anybody else want, anybody out there that wants to say anything, positive about this?
Can't read.
Okay, if anybody has anything they, they don't, anybody who's opposed, have anything to say about this, uh, sign ordinance? Okay, so there's no, no public testimony related to that, um, are there any further questions for anybody? Okay, so what I'm gonna do, without objection, I'll close the hearing, and we'll go into discussion, is that all right? Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing, okay, so now, uh, discussion, and, uh, now we can go back to the questions that you were asking, uh, Tom, on page forty-nine, on E, and if there's anything else that you will, that you have, uh, on that, and so go ahead, uh, Tom, you were, you wanted to state what your question was?
Um, yeah, do, right now, as it's written, uh, the tall flags that you see that have been fairly popular the past few years, uh, are prohibited in the city of Independence, and I just wanted to, I wanna throw the question out, do we wanna do that? I'm kinda, one way or the other, I, I don't think they're so bad, as long as it's not too many of them. You know, I'm sure you've all seen some, in some streets, there's just like ten of them lined up in a block, or something like that, but, uh, one or two, maybe it's not so bad, so I, I guess I'd throw that out to the council to see what they think, but?
Well, are you suggesting that we not ban them, but we just limit their use?
Yeah, probably, I think, I, it may be under another section, and I, I guess you'd maybe consider those temporary signs, and, uh, and so that.
But they aren't really temporary.
Yeah.
But then they start looking real rad.
But, but there is, but there is a, uh, you know, the number of signs a business can have, there's some limits on that, uh, so I would imagine they would fall under that. Mike, can you help us out here on that?
I think, personally, I think that the, the original intent for, the reason why cities try to control those kinds of signs and licenses is exactly what someone just said, the weather tends to make them ratty and tattered, and, um, no one maintains a, you know, we, we, uh, I'm, I'm resident myself, because I know that, that people use them in festivities, but that would come under a temporary sign, I think, I don't think you would even, you wouldn't even be promoting for, for that use. And certainly, certainly tall sale flags that are colored, with no type on it, wouldn't be considered a sign, um, you see those a lot, and I'm just kidding, you know, others, too.
I think they should be considered temporary, and permanent.
Well, the one thing I, I kinda feel like, if we're gonna have this stuff in, in the order, in ordinance, that we're gonna enforce it, if we're just gonna kind of look a blind eye to these signs, flag signs, then I'd rather have it be legal rather than prohibited. But if, you know, if we're gonna truly enforce it, that means like, give you one, the other part, you know, and that sort of thing, then, yeah, I agree with that.
Well, I think the attendance to a place is sometimes complaint driven.
Yes.
And, you know, and you have a staff that's working on it.
If that's, I mean, if, if any of those flags, like the ones in the park that are tattered, we certainly have a phone call, and you, you know, you're right, a lot of times, unfortunately, this demands on staff we have now, maybe it is complaint driven.
And would that be an appropriate way of dealing with it, somebody throws one up, we kinda don't worry about it at all, it gets tattered, if somebody complains about it, then we can, then we have something, we can say.
We have a tool.
We have a tool, I, and I, I'm open to that, so.
That's dropping.
Do this, I mean, you recall, or, to me, and, and, I think that, I believe it the way it is, so that we have the ability to enforce it. If it's allowed, as an outright use, and it does become tattered, and then we get into a fight with someone about, well, what is?
What is tattered? Yeah.
Yes, with some, with some people in town, it can be, you know, an issue, because that's what you have to do.
I can look that up.
You're okay? Okay, Nancy, you got any?
Yes, I got a, a question, on, on page forty-six, uh, the non-conforming signs. I understand what non-conforming is, a grandfather, but is there any, any precedent, or any way we could make that, uh, grandfather have a time limit on it, like, for two years, for, because in cases like what's out there now, if it looks bad, it is non-conforming, because, and we made a requirement that it not be that way, because it, it looks bad, or unsafe, no, I guess the unsafe part is distinct, but it's just non-conforming because of what we listed, can we do it for two years, and it wouldn't affect their livelihood, or their safety, or their ability to earn money for it?
I would have to refer that to the city attorney, I'm just not sure, signage is a, is a difficult, um, thing to regulate these days. I would be a little concerned, we do have the recourse where if it, if it's damage beyond sixty, you know, sixty percent of its value, and it can be, the planning commission can take action, we can take action to have it removed, or to bring, then it has to come into conformance with the new code. If you'd like, you can certainly give an opinion.
Does it ever come up, or does it have a time limit on non-conformance?
Um, non-conformance in the development code refers to use, and so if the use stops for more than a hundred and eighty days, six months, then that use limit, the new use of that property has to conform with the United States Development Code. So with a sign, it's a little, unless you're speaking of a sign that doesn't apply anymore to that property that's there.
Are you thinking of a sign, uh, perhaps businesses started up recently, that maybe is not a sign in the world, and are you thinking of a specific, uh?
Well, I, um, things in my mind, and I'm thinking that they don't think exactly the, you know?
The, the reason I ask is because I was thinking about a particular sign that I didn't like very well in town, and I'm thinking it should be nice to look like that. But I, going through this and, and not having, being able to look at the uniform sign code that we refer to, uh, I'm, I'm thinking it's probably a legal sign, because it doesn't look very good, in which case we can't really do anything about it.
Right, unless it was structurally deficient, and that's what the uniform sign code, trust me.
Yeah, and at some point, I remember when we made the sign where it's up about, and A-frames have to have, they're done professionally, so scribbling, um, thing is, uh, just ordinance.
Yeah, and we had, like, one time, we had a corporate staff member who, uh, the A-frame signs that weren't conforming, he drove around with a pickup truck and threw them all on the back, and we, we took them away. That's why you see much greater compliance today, with, um, the A-frame signs, or, um, the ones that I'm thinking of, are all in compliance, and they're failures, so it can, if you recall, one time we had a box, they were in the corner, and it's, it's tearing.
You're, uh, the part about the non-conforming, this is not the existing language, but you're right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm shaking. Did you have, are there other things that we want to bring up for discussion?
Please do.
So, I, I, I think I'm on page fifty, but, uh, under temporary for sale signs. When I just drive around town, and I see, and a lot of times it's on large, uh, on commercial properties, um, these are large signs, much larger than the force of the, and they're there for years, so I'm, I'm just kinda wondering where do they fall in the, the sign ordinance, are those, are those considered, considered temporary for sale, for sale signs, and that they might be there for three years?
No, this is one I would, I would consider them signs that require a permit, and, and we would consider them permanent, until the people, we would, um.
Do, so are, do we have any of those, those large commercial for sale signs that, that folks have gone through the process of getting permits for?
I'm assuming, I don't see the sign permits, but I'm assuming that the large, the, the one that I have in my mind is over on, so, near Seventh Street, um, it's advertising real homes, down in the south end of town, it's a, it's a nice looking sign, and that sign would have required a permit, so I'm assuming that it came, got, we were building officially, um, we issued a, a sign for, for something. I can't tell you for sure, because I don't see them.
And then, what is temporary in that application? Have we defined it somewhere as?
I, we could go back to definitions and take a look, um, I mean, when, when I think of temporary for sales signs, they are really the, the small real estate signs that you see, that are realtor attached.
Yeah, and they might be there for six months or?
Well, yes, that's true. I, I guess, in, in our operation, that's what we, it's, uh, a temporary for sale sign would be one of those realtor signs. Are you saying that we should, that we, we should limit them?
No, we're not, I'm just trying to, trying to understand the ordinance, and how it applies to for sale signs, both on size and the, when the time that they're there, I mean, there's some that are there until they fall down, and, um.
I think, I think, that's what I'm thinking of, there was an off of gun club, that I think is actually not, here's some funny hunks, if I recall correctly, of property that are, some are in the city, and some are in county, um, out there, if I recall correctly, over in the northeast, north, north of the gun club, and I know that was one of those things out there, and that county has a different set of rules than the city there, because some of that land is not, um, is not civil, and, if I recall, if, if I'm thinking the right place.
Yes, Karen, you're right, isn't it?
Um, if I may, address the council, um, if it makes, um, this process this evening a little bit more easier, this was being brought to you because we needed to get the changing image signs into, um, ordinance form right away. We have a more, um, detailed, um, look at the sign ordinance with our city attorney, and there's a lot more issues that we need to go over, in fact, and possibly even removing it out of the development code, and putting it back into the municipal code, and doing a whole lot more work and review with, as far as constitutionality issues and things like that. So maybe some of these concerns can be noted and brought back for when we do the big sign code revision.
Yeah, there are several subsections of the development code, this being one of them, that we'll be moving into the municipal code.
So this is kind of the improv, that we're, we're kind of halfway in. So, so we'll do this, and do this now, and then in the next year or two, we've kind of got the whole process?
Yeah.
Right, okay, I think that makes this, go, like, there.
Yeah, the next one, I'll just, yeah, it's coming, I've, I've seen there, the city attorney's concerns in their whole sections, that she wants to remove anything regarding, um, sign content, in other words, this ordinance right now, limits, um, you know, sort of, or, um, you want, you want to tighten certain sections of it.
On obscene signs, yeah.
Yeah, she's proposing to remove the, completely, yeah, uh, but she would like to see this coming into conformance, I think, with some other issues that we're not addressing today.
Okay, so you're essentially asking, uh, what it is for us to prove, some updated things that, that deals with some particular sign issues that are coming up that are, are pressing, and as this case would find, we're gonna go, come back and continue finding, continue looking for some of the, some of the legal people's out there characterization.
Yes, as well as other subsections.
Okay, does that, uh, delay anybody? Zach, uh, lay anybody's?
So we're, we're, we're close to finding one, I suppose.
We're, we're, no, we're, I think what they're, they're asking is that we approve, uh, because there's language in here, uh, related to some issues coming up with the knowledge that some things need to be, uh, significantly amended later on, uh...
In the, um, agenda on page thirty-three, the recommended motions would be, one, the hearing decision to move on those recommendations by the planning commission. I think, isn't that what you're talking about, Karen?
Yes.
Yeah. So that we can get all those into the Development Code, and then go ahead and do the ordinance.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I would do.
Okay.
But that just means we get what needs to be done tonight, then, yeah.
Okay. So, does anybody have any objection to, uh, we getting, moving toward taking action? Okay. Is there a public hearing? No, we already have, we did have a public hearing, it's closed. And, yeah, and then we closed the public hearing, so we're now under deliberation. Okay? I don't see anybody flagging me from the back.
I move to...
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I move to approve the recommendation from the planning commission to amend Subchapter fifty-eight sign ordinance that we did in the Development Code and adopt findings as contained in the statute in one thirteen fifteen.
Motion?
I, I do have a question about that, and so, so, so let me, let me do this, but can I get a second first?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Now it is discussion, please do.
Um, so the, the, the one change about, uh, the, uh, oh, under, under the free private exemptions where we needed to take out that, add that paragraph?
Oh, yeah, that's just a formatting, that's not, that's not...
Okay, so we don't, okay, we don't have to include that, not, not substantive.
Okay, great.
Okay. Any other discussion related to motion? All favors, signify, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So now we can go into, uh, this, now we were going with the ordinance drill, is that correct?
Right, a little bit of a bear, we dropped that.
Yes.
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill two oh one five oh one intro as attacked this campaign in Council, for the first time.
Second, motion, second discussion, all favors, signify, I say aye. All right, opposed, motion carries.
And ordinance amending the Independence Development Code, Subchapter fifty-eight sign ordinance.
Okay, somebody else?
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill two thousand fifteen dash oh one for the second time, for by title only.
Motion, second discussion, all favors, signify, I say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries.
And ordinance amending the Independence Development Code, Subchapter fifty-eight sign ordinance.
And if someone could find one for it?
I move to the proposed ordinance council bill two thousand fifteen dash...
Second, motion, second, discussion, are we okay? I understand where we're going, I'll just move it. Okay, all favors, signify, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
The bill is passed, and we'll be assigning ordinance number fifteen thirty-eight.
Mike, can you talk to us about, what, what do you anticipate the timetable for the, uh, the rest of the process that you were talking about? Is that, is that a month, is that six months, is that, and I understand there's a gage in here.
Yes, it's, I'm sure, you know, it could be over the next year.
Okay. Okay, that's fine, I give you the...
We haven't really talked about, Karen and I, we need to schedule a meeting, except, I mean, we had one, uh, scheduled, but, uh, with the holiday season, some other, uh, circumstances that, that meeting was canceled, but, it's a sort of a strategy, sort of a plan we need to talk about some more.
Thank you. Are there other council announcements? I do have one. Um, you folks are all on different committees and, uh, different things. If you, uh, if you want to make any changes, let me know, uh, and we can see what we can do. I'm not listed on there, on, on the committees, but I do the L O C of the council of governments, and mayors, managers, commissioners, so...
The committees.
Yeah, I just didn't want anybody to think I was, uh, resting on my chair drinking coffee.
Yeah.
And so, anyway, if you want to make any changes, let me know, um, we'll see what we can do. Okay? Is there anything else that we need to do for the rest of the committee tonight?
I just have a quick announcement.
Please do.
If you, if you're late like me, taking daddy Christmas tree, there's still a chance to get here, and the Boy Scouts come, uh, recycling your Christmas tree for a small donation, so, this weekend's the last weekend.
And I had my tree taken away, and you did a very nice job.
Yeah, they're coming right on time and early.
And then, others? And did the Central Girls win?
Central Girls won their first five A week game, fifty-nine, twenty-five against South Auburn.
Yay!
Congratulations, and I know your daughter's, uh, doing well playing for the team, and so congratulations to dads.
Yay!
Uh, with that, uh, if somebody moved to a turn place?
Move to a turn.
All favors, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It's, you folks stayed for the whole meeting, thank you, it's nice to see you.
See, they're just waiting to clean up cookies.
Yeah, house of cookies.